Ready? The April 2017... The April 2017 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning board hearing will now come to order. Will the Secretary please take roll?
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Gattens?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Chairman O'Neill?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. In accordance with Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are given testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during the thirty days is at your own risk. A favorable decision by the board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization. In accordance with Section 111 of the zoning ordinance, if you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an exemption. Anybody offering remarks?
Yes, I'll try to make it short and sweet, sorry people. For months... And I'm Jack, I'm sorry I have to bring this up again. People have been coming to this meeting unprepared, which means it's... We can't do our jobs correctly and we can't ask the appropriate questions to the people who come to the board. There's two items on the agenda tonight that are both incomplete applications. This might cause us to vote inappropriately if we choose to vote at all, so... What can we do to change this policy? I know we've talked about it before. We need to have it so that when people come to the License and Permit Department, they are fully prepared, they have all the information that they need before the packets are sent out to us. And how can we... Is there a policy we can change? Because I don't think that it's appropriate or I don't think it's working anymore. Like, can I make a motion or something that if someone comes unprepared before us, we automatically file a continuance? Because it's really not right. I mean, people have been sent away for incomplete applications before, we've been letting them come, and we're just giving permission for the next people to come without being prepared. So what could we do about that?
I think it has to be on a case-by-case basis.
And that's pretty much how it is handled. I'm very sensitive to your comments.
I mean, I don't mean it's you.
No, I understand.
They're coming in, they're not prepared, you're telling them what to do, they're not doing it.
In many cases, the problem is there's such a short time period between the deadlines for the advertising, for the appropriate advertising, and for the packets that go to the zoning board members. And when they put their applications in, first of all, when they're taking their applications out, they're all explained in detail that parking plans are required, whether it be professional, by professional, or whether it be by drawing it out themselves. A lot of times, they comply, but the plans that they submit are just worthless. They have to be redone. And I think that's the case with both of them tonight. They did submit plans, but they, in my opinion, were...
So like...
Unusable.
If you don't have the information, can we put you on the following month? That way you're prepared and the people that are on this board. Because I'm going and I'm sitting some of these properties and I'm saying, "What's going to happen here?" And then we come to the meeting, we don't have enough time to think of questions to ask these people because we didn't have the information until right when we got here.
Right, and if I don't get the revised parking plan after the packet goes out, you don't get to see it until the night of the meeting.
Right, that's right.
Now, what I could do is, of course, submit it to you if I do get it between the time the packet's sent out and the meeting is held. But, again, that's on a case-by-case basis, and I do agree with Dan that I'm trying to eliminate this, and I think maybe going forward, we'll continue to get better at it as far as providing it.
Well, I don't... Yeah, I don't think it's anything you're doing. I just think...
No, I understand what you're saying, you're a hundred percent right. Because like today, for example, Mr. Gattens and I were over in Southside going through a property because we didn't understand the parking plan.
Right.
And trying to get a handle on it, and in many cases, we just don't have the time for that. But I'll do the best I can to see that it's completed.
You do a perfect job, I'm just... It's just frustrating for us.
I understand, yeah, it is. But... Anybody else have any thoughts?
Jack, I think the almost falls onto the applicants more than you doing this. I mean, it's spelled out completely that the parking plan has to be turned when the application is brought back.
And they're told that as well.
Yes, I mean, and it shouldn't fall on Mr. Sweeney's shoulders to chase people for that parking plan. It's a simple drawing that's needed. A lot of people have come here, been here numerous times, so they should know it. It's not the first time for some people being here, and time and time again, we come up here with no plan. So we have an application in front of us that requires parking and nothing to look at. So we go out, each one of us go out to these properties and look at them, but without that parking plan, our hand, we have no idea sometimes what's being talked about or where these cars are being placed. So, in the future, I think that, again, we'll go case by case, and if there's questions that we just can't have answered by just looking at a plan that's given to us at 6:01 PM on the night of the hearing, then I think at that point there, we'll look at each case and either table it, or if the applicant wants to take a chance on voting it and have it voted down because of, "We don't know what you're doing," then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Jack, I just have one question. When someone submits that, like, who actually views it and looks it over and...
Well, I would look at it first.
Okay.
And again, in many cases, the plans are just worthless.
Okay.
And I tell them that, of course, but there's no time to replace it because I need to get the packets out to you guys, so you have as much time to review this before the hearings as well. So, and that's what happened this month with the two. Hopefully, in the future, there won't be any, but again, there'll be times where this might crop up. And again, I think you're right, they'll take a chance whether it would be continued or whether it would be voted down because of that. It's on their shoulder.
Do you think an extra week, like, sometimes if you know that there's going to be a problem or there's going to be an unprepared person and they need just an extra week, that we just postpone the meeting just to the following week?
I don't think you can make a blanket...
Hold on, then you would postpone it only for one person and you're...
Well, yeah, I'm not talking about...
Again, I think he has to be on a case-by-case basis because they may come in tonight with a detailed plan that you could see.
So we decide if we decide if it's too specific.
If it's good enough to... If you can understand it well enough tonight to vote on it, or you don't and say, "We can't vote on this, we're going to postpone it till next month." But you can't have a blanket rule on it, you have to go case by case to see what they've actually submitted.
Okay, so we'll see it and then we'll just decide.
Right.
Okay. Done, everybody? Jack attested a postions?
Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the city of Scranton. Do solemnly swear that I have posted the following addresses with a notice of zoning hearing. Item number... Agenda item number one is 615 Birch Street. Number two is 160103 Washburn Street. Number three is 105 Mary Lane. Number four is 916 Prospect. Number five is 815 North Webster. Number six, 612 Music Street. Number seven, 100 Florida Avenue. Number eight, Spruce Street and Dix Court. Spruce Street and Jefferson Avenue. Wyoming Avenue and Vine Street. Madison Avenue and Jefferson, I believe. Mulberry Street and Penn Avenue. Number nine, 1842-1844 North Main Avenue. And number ten, 1 Pine Brook Lane. The properties were posted on April 3, 2017.
Okay, let's call the first case.
Agenda item number one, 615 Birch Street.
Off the point, raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yeah, I swear.
Okay, and state your name and address, please.
My name is Youssef Kalio, the address is 615 Birch Street. Okay, I understand that I need to make a parking lot for four units. I'm trying to get on the building one, I want... The plan is to have two units in building one and two units in building two, and then between those two units, there's going to be a six-car garage that I have on the plan that's going to be eight feet by eighteen, and...
Did you say six-car garage or six parking spots?
Six park... Yeah, six parking spots, I'm sorry.
That front building, is that front building condemned?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the whole property is condemned from what I know.
Is this already purchased or is this one of those?
Yeah, it's already purchased.
Okay, so you plan to level the entire thing?
Yes. I've already spoken to a contractor regarding the demolition and the building of the floor, the asphalt, and this is... He said that this is the plan that we came up with, and we've just been waiting for the approval from the zoning board, and we could start pulling the permits. We've already have time, it's time-sensitive. The court gave us nine months, two months ago, so now we've been waiting for two months doing nothing. If you guys say that we can start working and this plan is okay with you guys, then...
You have the plan with you now?
Yes, I do.
Did you bring up this?
Sure.
Which is the front... This is the front house, right?
Oh, you're going to have to put the microphone, so...
Building one, as you see right here, is the front building, and then building two is the back building. And between, you see here, this is where it's currently there, which is the garage. We're going to demolish this garage and then build this parking lot right here.
So, Jack, the only thing he's looking for is setbacks off...
Well, he's... Basically, he's four feet short for the six spots that he needs. The area is fifty-one feet, and he'll of course need fifty-four. There's a set of concrete steps out in front of the rear building that would have to be removed in order to use that last spot, which he says would be removed.
If you remove the steps on the back, like Mr. Sweeney just mentioned, where do you plan on putting them?
Yes, well, instead of having it come out from the front, it's going to come out of the side.
And you have enough room there to do that with the wall that's there?
Yes, there's a tree right there, but that's... We're going to take the tree out, and it's going to make enough space for the walk-in.
So technically, you have five spots.
Correct.
Until he moves that. Did you say that you lived there? Where you're going to be living in one of these?
Yes, we do plan on moving into the front building after it's suitable for living, after we take its...
So it's going to be you and another residence in the front and then two in the back?
Yes.
And you've owned it for two months now?
Yeah, we've been waiting for two months.
One of the concerns I heard from the neighbors that are around there was the cleanup of it. I mean, it'd be something, I think, to benefit you and the neighbors if you clean up that backyard as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You didn't even start working on it yet.
No, we haven't done nothing because we've been told not to do nothing until we go to the court and we get approved for actual four units, so we can have an idea of what we're going to do.
Okay.
Exactly.
Is anyone else here to give testimony?
I think for the board's... Yeah, the board has a copy of a letter that was received by Mr. Sweeney from Ann Kays. Do you want Mr. Sweeney to read it into the record for you?
Yeah, they're...
Yeah.
They're concerned with not only the cleaning up of the yard, but the upkeep of the yard to keep it.
This is a complaint...
Because it was condemned. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is a complaint that I received today. Starts out by wishing me good morning and just dropping off an email regarding the zoning appeal for 615 Birch Street. Joe, who is her husband, and myself, as well as our close neighbors, are against this variance for a variety of reasons. First off, there's not sufficient parking for four families. There's a two-car spot on the front that will not accommodate the two families in the rear and the two families in the front house. I'm not really sure what she means by that because I was out there today and I didn't see any parking out front. But secondly, both properties are in dire condition. Both properties have been condemned, and there is a hole in the front... The front house roof that's loosely covered with tarp. It falls off all the time and blows since blown away altogether. This was before all the rain and the tornado winds and the two feet of snow that we've had. Mostly, we as neighbors are concerned about the upkeep of the outside of this mess. We believe the owner is an out-of-town fellow? Question mark. And by the looks of things to come, we are afraid that our block will suffer the consequences of yet another out-of-town landlord. We already have a few of them in the 600 block, and we endure many police calls, their garbage, strange cars, not to mention strange people that come and go. If 1650 were allowed to be made a four family, it would only increase the likelihood of more trouble in the future, especially if the owner is not around to keep an eye on things. I thought property management was necessary for owners that were not local, and we know how that works. Please be assured that our goal is to keep some semblance of a safe neighborhood here. It's harder... It's getting harder every year. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, and signed by Ann and Joe Kays.
So, sir, you're saying under oath that you're going to be...
Yes, I'm going to be living on the property, and I'm going to be maintaining the property, cleaning it, picking up all every...
You're going to be doing that by yourself, or...
It's going to be me and my father and my brother.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. No one else has anything to say?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, just one second, please. Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Second it.
The motion made in second it is for the use as a four-unit property. Are we making a contingent on him providing the ample space for that sixth parking spot?
By removing the staircase.
By removing the staircase.
Let's hold up and I have a question on that if we can.
Okay.
You are short one spot, one parking spot. You're required to have six for the four units. Where do you propose to put a six-car?
Where, like I said, when we take out the staircase, would that make enough room or not?
No, because you have fifty-one feet on your measurement right now.
You need three more feet to get a sixth spot in there.
That's correct.
He needs fifty-four feet.
Right, so I mean, even taking out that staircase isn't going to... Because if I'm looking at his measurements right here, he's showing fifty-one without the stairs.
That is correct.
So that won't work, and you're going to block the egress, you know, in an emergency by putting the cars right there. And you're only leaving basically about less than a foot away from the property, each house.
What's the square footage on the homes? Do you know offhand?
On the full property, I'm...
No, not the whole... Not the property, but the square footage on the homes.
I misunderstood.
No?
I don't know.
Sure.
Jack, I'm assuming this is on the tear-down list? Is that why it's time-sensitive?
Correct.
So if we were to approve, like, just say out of curiosity, if we were to ask for... To approve the front two units and show us that, you know, show the neighbors that he's going to be considerate of the neighborhood there, would that still leave the back house to be knocked down if he doesn't work on it?
I believe that would be an answer for the Housing Appeals Board. Because they are the ones that sent it to the demo list after that process was exhausted.
The alternative is to have two families in the front and one family in the back.
How do you feel about that?
Two families on the Birch Street house and then one in the rear house.
What if... It would be the same thing if it was one in the first and two in the back, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, you would need less spots, so you'd need less...
That'd be fine. Plenty of room then.
You could go one in front and two in the back, yeah.
Yeah, that's my only option, then that's what I'll do, have one unit in the front and two units in the back.
That's not your only option. We could vote the other way, but it's just something, we're trying to come up with something in between. You know what I'm saying? So we could vote on four, or you could take three and it looks like, you know, we'll pass on that.
It doesn't mean that in the future, that if you come up with a plan to accommodate that extra car, that you cannot open the second apartment in that house either. I mean, if you...
Could you obtain another lot or something like that down the street or...
Okay, so can we vote in for the four units?
Not on the four.
Not on the four?
Well, you can... You can vote in for the four units.
You can vote for four, but you understand it.
But you understand.
We're going to have to find another parking.
Well, no, no. What we're saying is, well, my own opinion, it looks like you might have a better chance of getting three than four.
Than four.
We could vote on four, or you could take three and try to obtain a little bit of land somewhere else and get another spot and go back.
So down the line, I can go and if I have another parking, I can get another unit.
Right, you can come...
You'd have to come.
You can come back for a fourth.
You come back to us, yes.
Okay, okay, so, yeah.
So I'll amend my motion to...
So, Mr. Kalio, you're going to amend it to ask for three units?
Three units.
Okay, so he's amended his application for three units.
Yeah.
I just want to say, you see your neighbors are pretty concerned about this project, so...
Yeah, I see. Yeah, but I'm going to do everything I can to keep it maintained and clean and safe for everybody.
I'll second the motion for three units.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote of four to zero, it's been granted, three units.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two, 1601-1603 Washburn Street.
Jack, one quick question. If it's two-two, is it passed or...
No.
Done?
Denied.
All right, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Ed?
Yeah.
Gary, you can yell at Attorney Kroyak for not having his parking plan.
I don't know if you...
I did object.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Yeah, let's address that first.
You can proceed.
May please the board, I'm Attorney Ed Kroyak, I'm here for Teresa Ludlow. This is a property on Washburn Street in Scranton. Ms. Ludlow, it's a four-unit building. It's been a four-unit building for some time. She's a newly... A new landlord who's trying to invest in the city and trying to improve properties. I've provided to you a copy of a letter from Sister Susan Azima from Catherine McCauley. She basically attested to the property, what was required of individuals being placed on the property. In essence, my client has been using the property for rentals through Catherine McCauley. They select individuals that are well-deserving of getting off the streets and getting into a premises that's safe. The property must comply with all HUD requirements. Catherine McCauley sends out individuals to inspect the property, and they also have caseworkers to go out there and contact and make sure everybody's... If there's any problems, they address it with the tenants going in there. So it's kind of a double check on improvement on the property. The issue with this property is the off-street parking. We provided to you with a plot plan and a survey which indicates the spots, the five spots in the rear of the property that will be created. I believe because it's a four-unit, she requires one more spot, so it's a variance request for one unit. She's basically complied with all of the permits in the city. She's taken the effort to do it. She was... Had a little rough start, she was new to the system, but now she understands it, and she relied upon some contractor, may not have been as forthright as she... They could have given her some advice, but she's kind of double-checked and done that and corrected measures, and she's a new property owner. She wants to invest in the city, and she wants to invest in this property and improve the neighborhood. I would point out to you that on this street, the makeup of the property and the makeup of the surrounding properties are all multifamily units. It's very similar to this one. This property measures about thirty-six hundred square feet. And my client is here in the case she had additional questions of her regarding the request tonight. And just, you know, in the background, the parking will be gravel, because she wants to ensure there's no water runoff going out to adjacent properties, so she'll make sure that the surface will be able to handle the water runoff going on from the property. Do you want us to throw a client in to have any questions? Do you have any questions to make?
Did you say that she had the permits?
Yes.
She had the permits, how come that was... The place was cited to begin with, and how come people are moving in without occupancy permits?
As I explained to you, Ms. Newcomb, we explained to you that when she started out, she relied upon some bad advice by a contractor, and then when she became aware of it, she did acquire all the permits and has acquired electrical permits and all the permits required of the property.
But she started work before the permits were issued.
And as a new prop... Correct, and as a new property owner, we just admitted to you that we had... She kind of got off to a bad start, not knowing some of the rules and learned them as she went along, and she's now corrected all those issues and worked with the city to correct those issues as quickly as possible.
I can state that she took out permits, she paid the fines for not taking the permits out, and she also took care of the stop-work orders as well. So she has paid up to date as far as that's concerned.
And Attorney Penner, I believe there was a statement provided by neighbors, and we would object to that and ask that the board not consider that on hearsay grounds, since I'm not allowed to cross-examine those, any witnesses of any neighbors, and obviously ask that hearsay be... On hearsay grounds, that be dismissed or not permitted in evidence.
They would be the two emails that Jack Sweeney got, one from Carmen Saidah and one from Michael Maile.
To our knowledge, we don't... Can't verify that those individuals were there clearly hearsay.
Well, Dan, how could we allow the first one and not allow the second?
Nobody objected.
Okay.
And my client would be willing to testify as to what she's complied with Catherine McCauley as well, what she's done to make sure that they come in and do the inspection, so she could actually testify herself to that as well.
Mr. Kroyak, I have a couple of questions for your client.
Sure, want to swear in or...
Yes, please.
Do you solemn... Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Sir.
Could I state your name and address, please?
Teresa Ludlow.
If you want to speak into the...
Sorry, Teresa Ludlow, 443 East Bruce Court, Wilbury Heights, New Jersey.
A couple of questions, Ludlow. Your tenants, are they long-term tenants through the Catherine McCauley house, or is it a short term?
The intention is that they're long-term. Sometimes that's not the case, but if they get public housing, then they do move on. But the intention is that they're long-term.
Running the same problem we ran in the last case, you're one short. Have you contacted any of the neighbors nearby you to see if it's possible to rent a spot off their parking pad or...
The neighbors on both sides only have four spots themselves, so they don't have enough that I could rent possibly, but I haven't checked with that, I could ask that. I do know that two of my tenants do not have vehicles and do not drive. There is a bus stop close to the house, and they use public transportation.
That doesn't... Yeah, that doesn't matter. You just have to have the spots, because those people can move out and new people can move in.
Okay.
Did you say you lived in New Jersey?
I do. I'm in town about seventy-five to eighty percent of the time, and I stay here to help manage my properties. This is my full-time job, and so I try to stay on top of it.
How many properties do you have?
I have three. Um, I'm also under contract right now on a house in Scranton. Uh, I'm moving up here to be here full-time, so that I can take care of these and not have any issues. Where do you stay when you are here, while you're still living in New Jersey? I stay with friends. In the city? Yes, ma'am.
Jack, was this a four-unit prior to that, or was it a two-unit? I see two, two front doors, correct?
Correct. It was a four-unit.
It was a four-unit?
It had to come to the board for, uh, the vacancy issues.
And so there's, uh, four meters, four water meters?
Correct.
Have you made yourself accessible to the, the neighbors if there is a problem with the property at this point, up to this point?
I have with the neighbors to one side, the other side I have not. I try to make it a point to, so that if there is a problem, they can contact me. Um, I've considered reaching out to one of the neighbors, the one that is upset, but I didn't know if it would possibly, I, I didn't know how it would be perceived, so I haven't done so.
With that, may I ask, Mr. Gattens, another follow-up question, the neighbor you did, did contact and discuss with, have, have they been accommodating and supportive of your efforts to renovate the building and improve it?
Absolutely, they've been very nice and very easy to work with. Um, as a matter of fact, just last Thursday, the lady who lives next door on the other side texted me and asked if I had any units available, she said that she had a friend who needed a place, and she wanted to know if it would be okay to give her my phone number, and I said, "Oh, of course," so...
Mr. Penetor, do we rule on these, his objection?
Uh, we have to, uh, sustain the objection because he does not have the opportunity to cross-examine the person, people that wrote them.
Okay, thank you.
Just to refresh my memory, they were on the agenda last month, and they were, and what matters, continue with to this month, were, was there a parking plan last month submitted with this?
No.
So this is this, so they have had quite a long time and to provide this?
The reason for the continuance is so that she could, uh, hire a counsel.
I also had a conflict in my schedule for the last month's hearing, so...
Oh, that's correct, I forgot about that, yeah, her counsel is gonna be out of town.
Um, so, so what's it zoned, uh, right now, two?
I'm sorry?
Is it a two right now?
No, it's, it's four units.
No, no, but I'm saying, that's why they're here, so i- is it, right now it's a two-unit?
No, we're here because of the vacancies.
Because of the, and the parking.
It's been, it's been vacant, so it reverts back to...
So, so no one is living there now?
For longer than a certain amount of time, so...
I'm sorry, right now it's a two, because I think it was built as a two.
That's what I, okay, okay.
But it's currently rented, is that what?
That is, well, I'm not sure if it's completely rented, uh, possibly, uh, Ms. Ludlow can answer that, but there's tenants over there, yes.
There's four people in there, four families in there now?
Yes, sir, there are four families.
So, four families in there without, was this property condemned?
No, 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 somebody died, and the house was left abandoned.
Yeah.
The house was...
Uh, and, and she was, uh, she didn't understand that she had to go to the board first, and for that matter, had to get permits and so on, so we're trying to do this...
So there was no occupancy?
Well, at the time that we became aware of the problems, I think it might have been occupied, I'm not really sure.
Yes, there were, there were tenants.
Maybe two months ago?
Yes, yes.
Maybe two and a half months ago, when we first, uh, were told about the situation.
But she is complying with everything right now, she pulled the proper permit, paid the fines?
Everything's in order, and this would be the final, uh, step.
How about like inspections of the work done, all that was done too?
Um, I'm not sure, were the inspections done?
I am not for sure of all of them, I know that in, any, I...
Before we give the CO, if they're not done, they will be done.
NCIE, NEIC?
NEIC, I, I, I'm not sure if they were completed.
They have been out, yes.
Yeah, but they would be, uh, required before we can give her a CO, but this is the first step before we get to that.
Okay, um, anyone here to give testimony? Please come to the podiums. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Thomas Myers, sixteen thirteen, sixteen fifteen, Washburn Street.
Okay, you proceed.
That house, an old guy, his name was Joe, I, I lived there for twenty-five years. Joe lived there twenty-five years by himself, that was never a four-unit house, it was a two-unit house. They come in, they purchased the house, and all of a sudden, four units go in there.
One second, that's what I was asking before, Jack, is that on the record as?
The, the only thing that we have any record of is that it was a two, when it was built.
Okay, now that's going totally different now, okay.
Again, that's why she should have came to the board in the first place, to answer all that.
Just, Attorney, interrupt for a second.
Sure.
Is there been two hundred feet of these problems, so the board can test it?
He's, he's right on the same block, yeah.
Two houses away.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can proceed.
So, four units come in, when, right now there's one empty apartment on the first floor to the left, so the house ain't fully occupied. Secondly, when, when the four units were occupied, there was no parking from there all the way up to the corner. Her tenants were using the Vilmaria parking lot for that. Yesterday was a good day, the cops were only called there twice yesterday. That was a good day, they're fighting there all the time. It's not hearsay, I seen it. They argue all the time there, last night, one o'clock in the morning, they had another fight there last night. It's nothing but nuisance there. I don't have a problem if they wanna do two units, that's perfectly fine. She did do a nice job, she put a new roof on, she did plants in the front, but, you know, she don't have the parking, she don't have the parking, so I can buy a house, two-unit house turned into a four, I had to come when I got mine.
It was always a, a four, or always a two-unit, correct?
It was always a two-unit for the last twenty-five years. Twenty-five years.
Okay.
Is there a reason why you think there'd be four meters on the house?
There would never was, they put them in.
So it was a two, two meters?
It was a two, and then all of a sudden, two meters just pop in.
Okay.
When they start doing the work there with the roof and everything on, on the, the property.
At that time, when they first started doing the work, did you, and you noticed there's four meters, did you contact the city at that point?
Yes, I did, I contacted Jack, and I asked, "What's going on here?" And he's like, "What do you mean? I don't know how they got an occupancy permit if none was ever issued for the four units."
That's pretty much what started the whole thing. But the four unit, the four meters were there from the very first point when I got on the scene. And again, I, I don't live there, so I, I can't testify to the, to the level that this gentleman can. My understanding is that the four units were always there, they just weren't used. But again, I don't know if that's true or not, that's what we were told.
Well, that's a big thing, if you buy a large house, you just can't throw eight units in and then say, "Okay, I'll pay fine." Sure, sure.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Couple of questions, when's the last time you've been inside the house?
Never.
So you have no idea what the con, how the problems are getting added up? You said, you said you lived there twenty-five years, always been a two-unit, and now you're in the house, how do you know this wasn't a four-unit before?
Because it was that one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you speak into that microphone when you talk, thank you.
Let's do it this way, Mr. Myers, you say you had...
No, I'm sorry, that one, so that you don't have to share.
All right, Mr. Myers, you said that you've lived there twenty-five years.
Correct.
And you said, to your knowledge, it's always been a two-unit.
Correct.
But you've never been inside the house to see the division of the units, have you?
No, but I talked to the guy that lived there, old Joe, that I used to help out.
So you, so you don't know for a fact what it was, because you never personally have any observations of it, correct?
Inside the house?
Yeah.
No, not at all.
And did you ever check the listings, when they, when the multi-list put it on there when the gentleman died, what the list, how it was listed?
No.
And you don't know if it was listed as a three or a four unit when they listed it on the multi-state, do you?
Well, I know there was two meters there.
If I was to tell you that it was listed as a three and four unit, would you have any dispute to that?
You could tell me it was listed as a ten, I have no knowledge of it.
Correct.
How it was listed, but I do know it was a two-unit for twenty-five years.
And your, your, one of your concerns is off-street parking, correct?
Off-street parking, the fighting?
Well, we'll get to each one of them. On the off-street parking, if off-street parking is made available in the rear, which we're here for this evening, which will put five spaces in the back of the property, that will alleviate one of your concerns, would it not?
And they're still short one, one parking spot, right, because it's one and a half per unit?
It's one and a half, but if you put four, five units in the back, that takes off-street, cars off the street, does it not?
Yeah, they, they can't park in the air.
And to the right and left, sir, are there also four units to the right and left?
Yeah, there's seventeen apartment buildings right there and five blocks out.
The next-door neighbor, he has four units and only four, four off-street parking in the rear, doesn't he?
You have to speak on him, I don't know what he has to...
No, you, you're there twenty-five years.
I'm not here for that case, I'm here for his case.
We're not here about that property, so let's stick to this property.
I just want to basically establish the neighborhood and the content of the neighborhood, so do you agree with me that in the rear of the pro, other properties also have only four parking spaces per building?
I never counted them, I don't know what they had back there, um, but I do know she don't have off-street parking.
And also, do you agree with me that she's having, she has improved the property and is improving it to, to your knowledge?
Well, she put a roof on.
She put...
Luckily, after she got caught, then she got her permits.
Okay, and she is doing the work on the outside of the property as well, correct?
She's not, she hired somebody to do it.
All right, thank you.
You also, you mentioned to, to Tom that it will get spot, cars off the street, and that's not necessarily true, because there might be six spots, there might be five spots, but there's no guarantee that they're gonna be used, that, 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 that street is always filled with cars, so I don't think that was a fair question.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony?
Can she use the, ask her to rebuttal, that's okay.
Sure, come back up.
I'm just a little confused too, because when, when you came in here, you preached that she was a new, uh, home buyer, and now she does this for a living, she owns three properties, buying another one? Doesn't seem so new to me.
I've bought them all since September. I closed on the first one September thirtieth, this one's October eighteenth, and then the other one in March, so I've done, I am very new, but I am also learning, and I do call Jack very often now, and get a lot of answers on things. I am filing for permits before I do anything, I am vetting my contractors, vetting my tenants, I am new, and I am learning. In addition to that, the downstairs unit is not currently with people in it, it is leased, she is moving in, she has her stuff in, so whenever he said that it is empty, in, in some rights, he was correct, but in some rights, he was incorrect, the lady did move out, and the other lady has moved in with her family, so it is all occupied. Another thing that I would like to rebuttal on that is whenever I purchased the home, it did have four kitchens. Whenever you look at the home from the front, it does have the two front doors, and it does look like a twin, and once you open both of those front doors, there's a vestibule inside of each with two more doors, and then you can go upstairs or into the downstairs apartments. And so it was originally, whenever I purchased it, already completely four units with unlocking doors, with egresses out the back, four kitchens, four bathrooms, totally separate units, and four electric meters.
With respect to his concerns with the meters, when you looked at the property to view it, as well as when you, with the listing, how many meters were on the property when you did the inspection of the property?
There were four-meter boxes, the one round meter for, um, the upstairs one over where the gentleman had lived was not in. The kitchen was in, the apartment was in, everything was in, but for some reason, that one was not in. I actually called and had to get the cut card on it and get that one reinstalled, so that one was reinstalled, but all of the panel and everything was already there, they just put the meter in after it was inspected and all.
Jack, that's pretty easily che, checked, is it brand-new, or is she telling the truth, it's been there for...
I think her description was accurate. I mean, I, again, we were told that there were four units in there from various neighbors, uh, four kitchens, whether they were used or not by this gentleman, the old man, as we were told, uh, I, I was told that was the case, but, uh...
What about all the problems, uh, he's, has concerns with the tenants?
There is one tenant that is a little bit of a problem right now, that has been problematic. Um, it comes with the territory, I do have a, a line of emails back and forth with the Catherine McCauley Center, anytime there is a problem, I immediately let her know. I go to the property myself, and I address this, it is a young mother, single mom, she is, she is a problem. She's actually moving out this coming week, because I explained to the Catherine McCauley Center, I said, "This is not acceptable, you know, my, my neighbor," she's like, "Okay, let me find a place for her, and we will move her so that it doesn't upset the neighbors." So they are really good to work with me on this, and I, I do try to keep, you know, a semblance of, of nice normalcy for the neighborhood.
In response to Mr. Myers' concern about the neighbors, what are you doing to vet your tenants and ensure that you're getting good quality tenants in your buildings?
I do have an application that is filled out, and then also with my, my property management software, I have the ability to pull credit checks and to do background checks, and to do all of that kinda stuff. It also has an online portal for them, so that they can fill out any type of, of, uh, service complaints or anything like that, and I can communicate with them as well through email and through text, so that we can stay in constant contact if there is a problem with the properties.
Would you also be willing to give to the neighbors, like Mr. Myers is concerned about the problem, your cell phone number, if you can address the issues about problematic tenants?
Absolutely, that would be preferred, actually, I mean, because there will be problems, it just comes with the, the territory, and I will be glad to work with people to, to correct them. That's ideally what would be best for, for me as well, and my property.
I know, and I, I spoke to your neighbor on the opposite side, uh, Mr., um...
Tobin.
Tobin, um, and, and I will say, he spoke very highly of, of your response when there's a problem and everything like that, and he also did tell me there's four units in that, that building, prior to you coming there, um, but he did say you're accessible, and that you do respond quickly when there's a problem, so...
Anyone else to give testimony, no?
So, since you see, uh, you're short one spot, the, the previous guy was short a spot, are you willing to bring this down to three units?
Three-unit building instead of a four-unit building.
Am I willing to do that?
Yeah, try to do it.
Is that what I wanna do?
Ask anyone who lives against forty-three.
I'm asking you, is that what I wanna do?
Yeah, don't give me a faster answer.
Yes.
Because again, like we, we said to the last gentleman, it, it's something that you can, if you obtain that parking spot, you can come before us and quickly go through it and...
I do have one question, though, the building is currently with leases for four units right now? What do I do in this situation, I have a lady moving out next week, so do I need to force any issues, or just once that one becomes available?
One person's not in yet, correct, you said?
She already has her stuff in, and the lease is already signed, but the other lady that's been problematic is moving out next week. Um, it, it's guaranteed that she'll be out by the beginning of next week, may I have...
That's more than sufficient, I would say.
I, I don't wanna displace families.
That's understandable, uh, we could vote on it for three, you know, with the contingency that that house will be emptied within ten days.
Perfect.
And keep in mind too, I usually lecture a little bit about neighbors, I mean, you know, maybe you would have no one against you if these people weren't screaming and, you know, problems with the police and everything else, that's what I'm saying.
I understand completely, I agree, sometimes tenants behave in a way and...
You can't pick your tenants either, I understand that too, but I'm just saying, be aware and be courteous of your neighbors.
Absolutely.
Because I can understand his plight, I mean, he's lived there over twenty, twenty-five years, it's a very close proximity to each house, so I think if you...
I have his contact information, too.
...were candid with Mr. Myers in the future, and hopefully it could become good neighbors with each other and work with each other as far as that property goes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'd make a motion for three units.
I'll second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Nukem?
I'm gonna say no, only, even though you paid the fines and, and you're applying now, everything just was done backwards, so, so I'm saying no for that.
I, I'm gonna also say no.
Chairman O'Neill?
Also no.
Due to, to the, uh, variance is denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, one oh five Mary Lane.
Good evening, uh, I'm Bob Mendola, professional land surveyor, I live eleven, my office is eleven oh nine Taylor Avenue, Dunmore, Pennsylvania.
Bob, hold on one second for us, hold on one second. I, I misunderstood that vote, I wanna vote for three.
Just a moment, please. Attorney Penetor?
Uh, I think we better get them back in here.
Okay. I thought we're, uh, with three, but we're voting against four to begin with.
No, you're... Mr. O'Neill misunderstood the vote, he thought the first vote was for four units, and that's why he voted no.
Correct, that's why I was voting no of the first ones, because usually we'll...
So let's, let's reintroduce the, uh, three units.
I'll make a motion for the three units.
I'll second the three units.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Nukem?
My vote and my reasoning still stands, no.
And, um, my apologies, yes, it's been granted, three to one.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
We'll continue now with agenda item number three.
Sorry to interrupt you there, Mr. Mendola.
Thank you very much. Excuse my voice.
Want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Robert Mendola, professional land surveyor. My office is at 1109 Taylor Avenue, Dunmore, PA 18510. I represent this evening David Trapper and Kelly Harrington at the 105 Mary Lane address in Scranton, Pennsylvania. I believe you have a survey drawing before you that I did for the property. What that depicts is the entire boundary of the property. I've pinned it out to show where they're at with their property. I located the existing house with the porch on the front and the side of the house. For the edification of this board, I also show the setbacks so you have relativity of what we're seeking tonight for relief for the side, for the actual second front setback, which is the setback on Lilac Lane. If I could just mention the fact that the front setback in the 1A R1 zone is 30 foot, but when you're on an intersection, you have in your ordinance any yard adjacent to a public street, that doesn't become 30 as the other front, but it becomes 20. So there is some relief there of having two 30-foot setbacks. That being said, this couple raising a young family, they have two children now, went on their way next month, God bless them. They want to to put an addition on the Lilac Lane side of the property. When you look at it now where the house is, there's a porch on that side also that right now as we speak is already over the setback lane. That's how it was built, 25, 30 years, whatever the house was built. We're looking to go just three foot beyond that existing porch, which is already over the setback, and we want to put a 14-foot, eight-foot addition coming from the house going out to Lilac Lane. In doing that, you're going to be over the front setback six foot. But that's the amount of footage they need to expand that kitchen right now because the house isn't very big to begin with right now. So we're looking for relief tonight for that setback of going over that side setback line of six foot. Again, keep in mind, the porch already is three foot over. So we're going to go another three foot and put a new kitchen after it, hopefully.
Mr. Mendola, that doesn't obscure the sight line there, does it at all? Being at the intersection, it doesn't, the sight line doesn't come into play at all where that's going to be sticking out far enough?
Sight distance here right now, even with the addition, it's already 30 and 20. It's more than enough for safety. Even with that addition coming out, it's going to be three foot beyond that porch. Your sight distance is more than ample.
Good.
But a good point for safety.
Anybody else in the audience give testimony? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes.
Thank you and good evening.
Forward as early you can grant.
Agenda item number four, 916 Prospect Avenue.
You want to raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Thomas Jenkins, 916 Prospect Avenue, Scranton.
You may proceed.
Okay, I submitted a plot plan and I also have pictures that helps support that plot plan. If you'd like, can I approach?
Yeah.
The first picture is a picture of the garage, which would depict two parking spots. The second picture was a picture of a driveway alongside the garage, which would show an additional one spot in the backyard area, which would just be additional parking if ever needed.
So how, how wide is your garage in the back, that land in the back? How wide is it?
The garage is 24 by 24.
So the apron in front of the garage is 24 feet?
24 feet wide, yes. I don't know if from the alley in, I'm assuming 20-ish, 15.
Above that garage, that was never an apartment? It was just a garage?
Yeah, if you'd like, I can give you some history on the property.
Yeah, please.
My wife and I owned the property since the late 90s and we lived there in a downstairs apartment and there was apartment upstairs. It was historically always two apartments. Through an unfortunate series of events, it became vacant and eventually condemned. I obtained the permits, revitalized the property, and now I'd like to convert it back to two apartments because my understanding is it automatically refers back to one, resorts back to one when it's condemned. The, above the garage was just my workshop at one point in time. It was just for storage. That's, that's the way it was when I bought it. It's not finished. It's not cheat rocked. It's just studded. The house itself now is ready to have two apartments. If I'm granted the permission to, with the understanding parking is legal, then I'd like to rent the two of them out. I have a realer involved. He's on hold right now. I told him my hearing was today to rent out the property. So that's where I'm at right now.
The garage, you're going to use the, the vehicles are going to park inside the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously the side that has the larger door, I don't know if the.
Yeah.
Other door didn't seem like it was usable.
Well, no, the one, if you look at on the left, I had a work truck with racks on the top and that's where I used to park that. The one on the right-hand side fits a car. That's a seven-foot high. The other one is an eight-foot high.
Okay, so that, that little, little door that functions as a garage door?
It's, it's a regular, that's a regular door, ma'am. It's seven-foot high, two-foot wide, seven-foot high.
It just looked updated, that's all.
Yeah, it's because I know it's dark there and that's why I think it might have been a bad picture from the way it's shown. But that's, that's a standard eight-by-seven door. The other one's eight-by-eight.
And that garage is completely cleaned out? There's.
Yes.
Because I, with my, with my car, I tried to get to that spot behind the house and it was a really hard swing.
Yeah.
With the, with the posts that were there.
There's no posts in this garage. It's a clear span garage inside.
Okay. And then there was that extra spot that you showed, so.
Right, the driveway is, you know, that's clear. And the additional parking I have shown in the plot plan, that's actually millings. There's, from the picture, you can see there's shrub on top of it. That's millings underneath for cars to park there if they need it.
And what were you saying about a realtor?
I contacted a realer to rent the properties out and once, if I do get the approval, then I have a realtor.
I mean, you know, once the property is condemned, you're going to have to go through a pretty, you have to bring this house up to date.
It is, sir. I obtained the permits. I got the, I've been in contact with Mr. Sweeney. We've been working together.
That's correct. This is the final step.
Yeah. It's off the list right now. My understanding, it's off the condemnation list, but I have to get, I still have to have it zoned for two apartments.
He's correct. Jack, what's the stipulation on sometimes when it's condemned, it's still maintain the two units?
Well, in this particular case, it will be one unit because it was a single.
Oh, it was a single at one time? Oh, okay. Anyone else to give testimony?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. Forward as early as has been granted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All righty then, next number five, 815 Northwestern.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Attorney Patrick Hughes and I'm here representing SJU Holdings LLC relative to a variance request for the property located at 815 Northwestern Ave., Scranton. This home was originally a five-unit property. We switched back to a one-unit property. We are here requesting a variance to a three unit. I want to call my client as a witness.
Want to raise your right hand, sir? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Okay. You may state your name and address.
Steve Uvaldini, 52 Whitetail Drive, Dallas, Pennsylvania.
Okay, you may proceed.
And what is your position with SJU Holdings LLC?
I'm a partner with my son.
And when did you first purchase the property at 815 Northwestern Ave.?
In December.
December of 2016?
Of 16, yes.
And was it zoned a unit one then residential property when you purchased it?
Yes.
And do you know if the property was ever anything but a one-unit property?
It was a.
No objection.
Proceed.
Attorney Barrett?
Pardon?
My objection, my objection is that the application actually referenced, we referenced here tonight that they are attempting to restore it to a, I think they're saying a three unit.
An R3.
My, my understanding is that this property is a single-family home that was built as a single-family home. It came before the board in 2001 for to restore apartments. That was denied in 2001. I have that decision with me today. So I submit this is not an application to restore anything. This is a single-family home. So it's a pure variance, not to restore, but to convert from a single-family to three units.
Who do you represent?
I represent a list of objectors. We happen to share it with you. My name is Matt Barrett. I represent the following individuals.
Actually, what I'm going to ask you to do is you share the microphone with him and you have that to yourself, yeah.
I represent the following objectors and their addresses. Valerie and William Burke, 801 Northwestern Avenue. Sharon Mayer, 1112 East Gibson Street. Robert and Alice Thiel, 810 Clay Avenue. Mary Catherine Smith, 1217 East Gibson. Elaine Gerow, 749 Northwestern. Genevieve Siegel, 745 Northwestern. Myself and my wife Lori Barrett, 739 Northwestern. Joel and Leah Laurie, 735 Northwestern. They also own a property at 746 Northwestern. Robert and Nancy Norton, 806 Northwestern. Thomas and Ann Grimes, 808 Northwestern. I'm sorry, failed to mention. Mary Jennifer Boland-Fritalli, 728 Northwestern. Joseph and Patricia Mesko, 738 North, I'm sorry, 738 Northwestern. Eric, E-R-I-C-H, and Lydia Ross, 826 Northwestern. Paul and Rosemary Fahey, 834 Northwestern. David Boland and Patrick Galworth, 1128 Myrtle Street.
I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a pretty long list. You don't need to, are they all here tonight or?
Most are.
And are they objecting to three units? Is that what they, is that what they're objecting? Objecting to the fact that it's going to be three units or that it was never, or that it was, what you said before, it was a one family and, because his application says it was originally a five.
It was, it was previously a five.
Switched to a one.
Switched to a one, trying to go back to a three.
So they don't want it as a three regardless? That's, that's, that's what they're opposing? I just wanted to make that clear.
I don't understand your question.
I wanted to know what they were posing.
It's a single-family residence and there's a request to convert it to three units and they oppose that.
They oppose the three units. That's what I want to know.
Mr. Penatar and Mr. Sweeney, before we go any farther, it was quite an extensive list with some addresses that aren't on that block. Are they able to give testimony?
Well, if they're more than 200 feet away, the board has the discretion to allow or disallow their testimony. You can allow it or you can limit it to the people that are within 200.
And I would object to anybody outside of 200 feet.
I would.
That's up to the board's discretion. They have to allow anybody within 200 feet. They could go beyond it at their discretion.
Regrettably, I did not finish my list, but I think the list that I had gone thus far were within 200 feet.
You can continue with the list.
Okay. Paul and Rosemary Fahey, 834 Northwestern. I think I said David Boland and Patrick Galworth, 1128 Myrtle Street. Kevin and Denise Norberg, 825 Northwestern. John and Patricia McGovern, 819 Northwestern. There are additional people in the audience that are not within 800 or the 700 block of Northwestern, but I will defer on listing them until later on if necessary.
You may proceed.
Yeah. And do you know if the property was ever anything but a one-unit property from your knowledge?
The best of my knowledge, yes, it was zoned as an R3 and an R5 at one time.
I'm sorry, can you just speak up? I can't even.
I'm sorry. At one time, the best of my knowledge, it was zoned as an R3 and an R5 at a later date, or earlier date.
And that was previously toward, when you bought it, between December of 2016?
Yes.
And could you describe the property in regards to its size?
It's a rather large house. It's got 10 bed, 10 bedrooms, 10 bathrooms, three kitchens. Yeah, it's, it's.
I have it in my head. It's a beautiful house.
Yeah. You're familiar with it, okay.
And so you would say that this property would be unique physically for a one-unit property?
Yeah.
And what would you have to do so that you could rent this property out as a one-unit property? Would you have to make renovations or what would you have to do?
I don't know how you could do it. I mean, you'd need a pretty unique family that could use a house that large.
And do you have knowledge before you previously bought the property of the previous owner trying to rent it out to one, one-unit families?
He tried. He tried to do that and sell it for three years and couldn't do it. And so we bought it hopeful that we could do this.
And are there other multi-unit properties in the area as well?
Yes, there are.
And what type of renters are you looking forward to rent the property out to?
Our, our plan with doing this was to rent it to students at the medical college and nurses and doctors at the hospital. We reached out to people there and said there was a need for it, but they want it, we'll say nicer housing. And if you, any of you are invited to come in and look at it, you'd be proud to live in it. I mean, we went nothing but the best with the way we fixed it up and so on. We did all the repairs that were necessary on the house and still tried to keep it within, it's kind of like an historical house. We put a lot of antiques and antique furniture in, very nice paintings, so on, you know, to keep with the theme of the, of the house.
And are you going to charge higher rents to perform background checks on all your applicants?
Yes, we are.
And would you say you're experiencing a hardship because of the size of the unit and it being zoned as a unit one property?
For sure, yes.
And what, what type of hardships?
Well, if it's a one unit, I can't rent it. I can't make it work, you know, doing that and.
I'm guessing it's approximately 6,000 square feet?
7,500.
I think it's 7,500, 8,000, yeah.
So just to refresh me, when you bought this, were you under, you understanding that it was already zoned for, for more units?
Well, the realtor showed us that at one time this was an R3 and the person that owned it before me used it as a.
Objection.
Continue.
He used it as a, we'll say.
Objection.
Sir.
My objection would be, if I assume the information that he's relating came from somebody else, I'd object on here, sir.
Sustained.
And do you have any other knowledge of the person that owned it before you?
I, well, I knew him, yes. I'm not sure the question.
So is there any other, any other hardships besides that? Or any, would it be hard for a family, a one-unit family to buy this property? What type of family would it take?
Somebody with about 12 children and a very high income to buy it and.
Or, or a one-unit family of?
Of, well, we see families of, yeah, whatever, but it's, I mean, what I'm trying to do here is, I only want to rent it to, I'm not renting this to college kids. It's not going to be a party house. This is to medical students. This is to nurses. The hospital has told me, they even have doctors that have to come in for a six-month stint or longer and so on. And I want it, there'll be no partying there, nothing. And if you see the property, trust me, the first time I hear anybody is, is trying to do something, they're out. And it's going to be part of the lease when they go in there.
All right, thank you. I have no more questions.
Jack, I have a question about the parking. You have the plan. He's allowed to parallel park them like that in front of the little carriage house there, right? I mean, I was.
As long as he's not using the carriage house, yeah.
Yeah. So you don't plan on using that, that carriage house?
No.
What's in it? Is it?
It's empty.
Oh, okay.
It could be, somebody could park in there if they had, or put their stuff in there, you know, if they wanted to. And it's also, you know, it's got a long driveway as well, which we didn't count for the parking spaces.
I just want to make sure that.
I want to address the parking. Before we decide, you have the parking. You need five spots.
Mm-hmm.
You're parking in the back. You're showing that you have five spots across the back and your measurement is 64 feet. You need 21 feet for each car you park there. So that's three cars you have in the back, 63 feet. Nine by 18, when you're going to parallel park like that, change the length of the parking spot you need. So it needs to be 21 feet.
He only needs two of them anyway.
So let me, let me. So, let me, let me finish. And the other one you have blocking the driveway, number five. So if you look at it, you'll have four spots. You have one in the driveway, and then three across the back of that garage, because you can't block the bottom of that driveway.
Yeah, but the driveway starts at the top and goes to the bottom, so he can get out in front and then drop it in.
He can't, he cannot back into that street. Jack, am I correct? He, he needs to have a thorough right through.
Correct.
So he has four spots.
So he's allowed to back into the spot and pull back out? He has to drive from the front to the back?
Well, not from the street.
What was that?
Not from the street, he can't back in.
Yeah, but even if he gets rid of one i- in the back, that's still four across the back, and then the fifth one, but i- in the driveway.
But, but it's not, because he has, his total width of the property in the back is 60, 64 feet. And he puts three cars across the back, that's 60, that's 63 feet, so he's blocking that driveway still.
Which he wouldn't need anyway.
Jack, suppose you looked at that and said it was correct? Said that it was not fair. I, I don't know the measure in terms of footage and so on, but...
Mr. Chairman, could I go over and just see what they're looking at?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Jack, so does, does he have the parking, or he does not have the parking?
He only has three. Can't use numbers one, five, or six.
Yep.
Well, one, two, three, and four are not enough room for four spots. It's only enough for three spots.
There's property, the property is 64 feet wide, and three is 63, so...
I use where he has number spot one to turn around in the alley. That's where I, so he can't use that as a parking spot?
It wouldn't be wide enough, Carrie.
Oh, see, I, I, Mike, I, that's what I used to turn around when I was in there.
Mr. Sweeney, I'm, previously, my client said he spoke with you as well, and that it was, you gave him the confirmation that was outright on parking spots as well?
Well, I didn't give him confirmation. I was a little confused. We had, this is at least the second time I've seen, or second different plan I've seen. And I wasn't sure whether they were going to parallel park in the back there, or whether it planned on pulling in. My assumption is they were going to pull in forward. But I don't think there's enough room to do that, is there?
It seems like there is. I've been in the back there and pulled in, and I'm out of the alley.
If you pull in forward, then there isn't enough spots.
Yeah.
Jack, the apron of that garage doesn't extend 18 feet.
Well, that was my question.
Yeah, the apron's about nine feet, eight feet, nine feet. The garage has some minimal setback.
That's where the problem is.
But one was definitely big, wide enough for my car, because that's what I used to turn around. And then I thought to myself, oh, it's gravel, he'd have to pave this. So I fit in there perfectly fine with my car.
Well, then, at the best, I mean, that's still, then that would be four spots.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But, but, but it's not. I don't want to disagree with this new comp, it was fine to turn into, but when you try to line three cars up at 21 feet, from fence to fence, it's still 63 feet. So you're still blocking that spot. When I was there the other day, there's a, a blue pickup truck, a large-sized pickup truck parked there. And that's what caught my attention, is how, if that pickup truck is parked there, how do you plan on putting three more vehicles across the back?
I would also submit you'd have to honor a five-foot setback.
So I, I mean, at that point there, the, the parking, according to your plan, is not there.
The, the next question that I have, what is, I did not go up the driveway. I was just in the back, and it looked like it was an enormous garage, obviously, but this right here.
So it looks like we're short one spot. We'll still continue, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, let me ask you, before we go continue, the first plan that you submitted shows parking behind the, the carriage house.
Right.
But the second one doesn't.
It's, they, they both should be the same.
Well...
Now, the one we have in front of us does not have it.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just ask, when, in describing what was submitted, can we agree that what was submitted was not a survey of any sort? It's just a handwritten...
Right, well, he submitted one with the application, and then when I told him I didn't think it was clear enough to go forward, he submitted a second one, which was a little better, but still not great. What, what I need, I think we need is, is to demonstrate to us is where the six, the five cars are going to go.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, I, I need you to show us where the five cars are going to go.
Can you approach?
Sure.
Somebody else is going to testify or offer testimony as they'd be sworn in.
Yeah, John, you have to be sworn in.
Would you like to join in here? This is the first one, this is...
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and address, please.
John U Baldeany.
And address?
Oh, 366 Overbrook Road, Dallas.
Thank you.
Jack, if you put a microphone?
You have to speak into the microphone, guys.
The stenographer would like you to go back to your post, so he can hear you, she can hear what you're saying from the microphone.
Watch the cord, John.
For three units, I thought we needed, we only needed five spots. I put an extra one here behind the garage. This is the extra space on the, behind the carriage house. And then I had two here. You could actually fit four back there, and that would leave one in the driveway. But, but according to the zoning laws, you need 21 feet when you park parallel, 21 feet. Your property, you're showing us is 64, so you can put three across. That gives you 63 feet. But by, let me finish, please. But by doing that, you're blocking the exit of your driveway, so you can't do that. No, no, it's not. No, the, the other side that you're seeing there, that's, that's just landscaping. Your property, if, if I go by your measurements, is 64 feet wide. Am I correct? No, 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 that's just to the edge of the carriage house, and then the driveway is next to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what... Well, still, okay, so you still have three in the back, that's 63, and one in the driveway is four spots. Okay, and you can't do two in the driveway? No. You can't. Well, I have this, I have a gravel area over here that I could pave, if that... But you, you're, so the carriage house itself, how, how wide is your lot? How wide is the lot altogether? I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head. So do you understand what I'm saying? If, if that carriage house is 61 feet or 64 feet, you have a little leeway, but what, for myself, I'm going to speak, not knowing that you're not including that gravel driveway in there, I'm, I'm not going to vote to, to squeeze a car in there when it can't be. Yeah, this is, this is like a, this is like a landscape barrier. I thought I was just leaving an extra spot. I mean, you don't need to put that car parallel, you could back it in, that last car. You're, you're missing my point. You're not telling us how wide your property is altogether. I'm not going to go on an assumption... I don't have any of that. Yeah, but I'm not going to go on an assumption that, that in that 64 feet, that driveway, that gravel part isn't included. Do you know what I'm saying? You're asking us to assume something here, and we can't do that. We, we need the facts on it at this point.
John, what, what about the spots that are, if you're looking at the carriage house from the rear, to the right? Because the plan shows that there's three spots there.
There is. I, I took them off, because I thought this would be easier to see. There's plenty of parking there.
Can we see that plan?
Yeah, there's, there's tons of parking. I, I kind of redid it just to not confuse you guys, isn't it?
You're not confusing us, confuse us more.
That's just a very important part of it.
I know, I should have took, taken pictures and everything.
And then we didn't, we didn't get the original plan, we just got this plan here.
You could do something, you could open this up.
Yeah, you can park here, you can park here. You can park two right here and right here. You could park one here and here, and then you take one out. There's your five. John, the, the gravel area, stay right there, stay there, stay there, stay there. The gravel area to the right of the carriage house, looking in from the alley. How wide is that? Ten feet? Oh, more than that, it's like tw- probably 25 feet. Wide? Yeah. Well, that's a big area, yeah. I, I, I don't know. It's not 25 feet, it's not 25. No, it's, yeah. When I, when I was older, I, I took a gravel spot.
Hang on, why don't we put that on the record? Let's, let's clarify the record here, let Jack tell you what he observed.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the spot along the property line, to the left of the carriage house, I'm sorry, to the right of the carriage house, this plan shows three spots that would be used for parallel parking. However, in speaking to John U Baldeany, that's about 12 to 14 feet wide there, which wouldn't be wide enough.
Jack, I ask a simple question to you. Is there enough spots on this property for four, or four to five, five spots?
Well, it's, it's certainly not clear. Let me put it this way. I certainly am not willing to testify yes or no. I would have to get somebody like Mr. Vindol out there.
It sounds like to me, guys, we're going to have to start over and go back to the drawing board, maybe get some...
Get a professional.
Yeah, professional. And I would ask then if we would have to come back with a, with a better map and prop, show the prop parking spots that are available, before, before any vote was taken place.
You're not giving us any true numbers to look at.
Exactly.
Yeah, we have two plans here, and neither one of them seem to work.
Okay. And I would, I would just ask to come back and have a better plan to show you the parking spots on it.
So you have to ask...
We could take testimony of people in the audience if you don't want to come back. We, we could, we could also do that, but we can't make a, a guess on if there is that many spots or there is not. We need, we need actual foot from...
May I suggest, may I suggest that there was some preliminary discussion regarding hardship. I would submit that this applicant can't prove hardship. If the board would consider that issue tonight, and then make a determination on that, if there's no hardship, and they can't show their intent to a variance, then all this other stuff becomes moot.
And, and I would again ask that they both, both be together at the same hearing.
Well, I would submit...
Well, I would say there is a hardship at 8,000 square foot house.
Hold on.
No, no talking from the audience.
Nobody from the audience, please. I'm just stating that.
If, if that's the case, sir, then I, I would ask you to recuse yourself. You've already made a determination without hearing the evidence.
Well, no, I'm just saying that, you know, 8,000 square foot house, you're going to have very few people, what it's going to be a...
What, why does that matter?
Quiet!
It's, it's not, it's not, it's not a standard, it's not a standard, respectfully, it's not a standard as to whether or not there's very few people. The question is whether this property can be used for its purpose, as a single-family home. I'm more than happy to present evidence regarding homes that have sold equally large for similar prices, and, and, but if you're making a determination...
Well, no, I'm not going to make a determination, because he also said that it was one time of a five, whatever, a five.
He previously said it was a five-unit home.
And that's completely...
And obviously, going forward, we want to see, you know, is there proof of it being a five-unit?
Yeah, there's not.
Was it always a, a one-unit?
And along with, along with the one-unit homes that are in the area that he's presenting, there's also many, many multiple-unit homes in the area as well.
That's something also we need, if you guys have proof that it was more than a one-unit, stuff, stuff like that.
Again, I would, I just, I don't understand what the purpose of asking, whether it is, whether it ever was a, a multifamily. It's a single-family home. They're asking to restore something. It's a single-family home. They're asking for a variance to convert it from a single-family to a three-unit.
Is there only one kitchen in this house? So it, how many meters?
No one in the audience say a word before you're outside. Let Mr. Barrett make the, make the arguments. You'll get your chance to come up and testify. Game, when is your turn?
I, I'm certainly going to question the witness on some, I mean, I have questions.
That's fine, that's, you're right. How many electrical meters are in the house? One. How many kitchens are in the house?
Three.
And how many separate entrance ways? So there's three separate doorways into three separate units?
There's, yes.
You're all going to come into a common area, and then the other units are on, each unit would be a floor.
Yeah.
You would have the whole floor.
Is, is that how it's set up now, or is that how you plan to set it up?
That's how it's set up.
And there's only one electrical meter, so the whole entire, is only on one heating?
Right, so when I lease it, it'll be all-inclusive.
Oh, so you'd pay the heating bill? And, um, that's, that, that was it, that's it?
If I, if I could ask some questions, I'm intrigued as to where these kitchens are.
Sure.
Where, where are these kitchens located? I know there's one on the first floor, where are the other two?
One on the third floor and one in the basement.
And when were they installed?
The plumbing and sinks were left, and all we have to do is put the appliances in.
Hold on. The plumbing, so where, where on the third floor is the plumbing for a kitchen?
The right front, the right front room.
It was, it was a laundry room, it used to be, it was a kitchen.
Okay.
That's all we have to do is put...
Hold on. On the third floor, there are empty rooms with some bathrooms, and what was a laundry room in the front right part of the house, correct?
Yes.
Okay. In the basement, there is plumbing for a sink, correct? There's no kitchen, there's no kitchen.
Yes, there's a bathroom down there, there's everything, yeah.
There's no kitchen in, in the basement, correct?
There is a kitchen in the basement.
I would call it a kitchen.
When did you install the kitchen?
We didn't.
Okay, tell me, tell me what's there.
All we have, there's a sink.
Tell me what's actually there.
We have to bring in appliances, there's a countertop, and we have to bring in appliances. What else would make a kitchen?
You're saying in the basement, there is a sink only? For, that's the kitchen?
There's a sink, and everything's there for the appliances to go in, they're just not hooking it in.
When you say everything is there, what do you mean by everything is there? You're saying that there's a 220 hookup for, for an electric stove?
Well, yeah, it was there for a, for a washing machine, but we could use it for a stove, or whichever.
Okay, and, and so you're saying that you're converting the laundry rooms to a kitchen? That's the plan, correct?
I don't know. When we looked at the house, we, we assumed that they were kitchens for a house that big. We didn't look at it as, as it was a laundry room.
With regards to this particular house, you and I can agree that when you bought it, it was a single-family home, correct?
Correct.
All right. You and I can agree that with regards to this particular house, it's, it could be, it could serve as a single-family home, correct? There's nothing that prohibits it from being a single-family home, correct?
It's set up pretty much like a rental would be.
Well, technically, any house could be a single-family house, correct?
When you say it's set up pretty much like a rental, you and I can agree there is one entrance that feeds the entire house, correct?
Correct.
There are no walls that separate the second...
There's multiple entrances.
There's no walls that separate the second floor to the, to the, first floor to the second floor. There's an open staircase, correct?
Right.
And then there's an open staircase, in fact, it's beautiful, it's wide open, it continues all the way to the third floor, correct?
Right, but to get, yeah, to get into each floor, there would be a door you'd have to go through to get to each, each floor.
That's what you would do. Currently, it's not set up that way, correct?
No, it is, yeah.
All right, and so...
Wait, it is set up that way, or it is not set up?
It is, it is.
Wait.
No, 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 ask it again.
All right. If I walk here, maybe I can approach the board with pictures, how about that?
I mean, you've had pictures this whole time, and you're just showing us, you've had pictures this whole time? In front of you?
Yeah, I've got some.
Let's see them. Like of the inside of the house? Yeah, I'd like to see the pictures of the inside.
Well, let them, let them cross-examine first, and then show the pictures up to the board, or, show the pictures first.
I want to see the, you know, the kitchen. Yeah, let's... So these are just similar houses in the neighborhood?
Sir?
This is when they listed it.
Sure, the set of pictures?
We could just take a look at that. We just agree that on that paper that I've just handed you, there are six photographs depicted, correct? handed you, there were six photographs depicted, correct? With regards to the current functional kitchen, the one that's depicted appears on the first floor of your home, and that's on the bottom right, correct?
Correct.
All right, and with regards to the staircase, that appears in the bottom left. You and I can agree you would walk into the foyer of your home, and the open staircase begins right at the base of the first floor, correct?
Yes.
And if I walked up the first floor, I would then go through, to a landing, which would then take me to the second floor, correct?
Correct.
There would be no door, no wall, nothing that would prohibit me from going directly up to the third floor, correct?
No, it's a hallway.
Correct, it's a hallway.
Yeah, right, but to get into the second floor, there is a door there.
There's a doorway at the top of the second floor staircase.
Yes.
When was that installed?
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, so since you bought it, you actually started to convert this to apartments, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett, all these pictures of these houses, these are all, you've shown them to us, because they're all very large, one-family houses?
Not only that, they're very large, single-family homes. A couple of them have actually sold in the last year.
And have been-
And are used as single-family. So that's why I'm getting to this hardship issue. If I could be allowed some additional questions. You and I can agree that the hardship that you would endure would be, the hardship that you're talking about is an economic hardship, correct?
Correct.
And with regards to that hardship, it didn't exist as to you until you bought the house on December 30th of 2016, correct?
Correct.
I mean, just, to kinda speed things along, I just think on the limited issue, at least currently before the board, as to whether they can establish hardship, I'm more than happy to submit a brief and provide the board what I believe to the relevant case law has to provide, that's not a hardship. Pennsylvania Supreme Court has been pretty clear that economic hardship is not an excuse, and in fact, this grant in zoning ordinance specifically provides that mere showing of economic hardship shall not itself, by itself justify a zoning variance. That's on page four of the brief that I've handed you. It's the last sentence on that page. It's part of this grant in ordinance, and if you look at the case law that's cited above that, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has recently, as 2014, specifically addressed it, addressed that issue on page three of the brief, that mere economic hardship will not itself justify a grant of variance. This home is a single-family, there's one kitchen servicing it, there's nothing that makes it rental units right now, and there's no plans before you even to consider what the rental would look like. So the record is clear also. I handed you those photographs. If you take a look at the first photograph that I handed you, that's 746 North West Route Avenue, that's corner of East Gibson, and northwest will mark that as objector number two. That's home by Joel and Maria Laurie, two of the objectors and two of my clients. They purchased that home in August of 2016 for $475,000, and it's a single-family home.
Did you just say Joel and Maria Laurie?
Joel and Leah Laurie.
Laurie, oh, okay.
L-A-U-R-Y.
I know, I know, I know who he is. Okay, thanks.
If you'll permit me also, I can hand up objectors number three. This is the property located in section 610, 612, Bay Avenue. It's actually larger than the property that happened in, this was purchased in February of 2016. You can see the tax assessor record behind it that shows it was purchased for $235,000.
Jack, what is this house zoned right now?
It's R1A.
What's that?
R1A.
Single, single-family.
For some clarification, when you rent this out, if you were to get this, when you rent this out, this is three separate units. You're not renting by the room.
Right.
And let's go back a little bit to testimony you gave to Attorney Barrett. If I heard correctly, you installed a wall at the one top of the steps after you purchased it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We, can I say something on that? We were advised by somebody that before we would come here, we had to do that first.
So, listen to testimony of previous cases, did you pull the proper permits or anything to do that?
The person who did it got permits for the work he did in the house.
I would ask Mr. Swain to weigh in as to whether or not any permits have been pulled regarding this property.
The only permit that I'm aware of is the permit for the sink that was leaking, that was an emergency type of thing. I was told by John that the work that was being done up there was mostly cleanup, paint, flooring, carpets.
So the concern I have is-
Things that were not, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Things that were not required for permits. I'm not aware of this door.
I would also submit the gravel driveway was freshly installed since the purchase.
The concern we're having, and we've seen it a couple times tonight, is that work is being done, and then coming before us, and you're putting the cart before the horse here.
I agree.
Thank you.
Do you wanna let any people speak, or do-
I'm thinking this way. Attorney Hughes?
Yes.
Let's go through the requirements for a variance. We talked about the hardship, but I think Attorney Barrett has had a chance to present his side of the case on the hardship.
Correct.
How is this hardship not self-inflicted?
Well, I would argue that previously, this was a five unit. Now it is a one, it used to be a three, and the previous owners also were trying to market it for three years, and they couldn't do it, so I mean, I don't understand how anybody could buy the home now and try to treat it as a one-unit home.
Attorney Barrett?
Just on this issue of five units, because I, this board ruled in 2001 to not allow this to be converted to, at that time, four apartments. With regards to, so it's a single family. With regards to the hardship, it's completely anecdotal. I mean, what the prior owner decided to do is irrelevant. These folks bought a single-family home for $382,500. Must've had some purpose. I mean, it must've had some value in use, so they bought it. And I presented evidence regarding the value of homes that have sold as single-family. I just, that's why I think the board could take up that issue and deal with this tonight. If not, obviously, Mr. Penatar, if he's gonna continue to go through those, mere economic hardship and self-inflicted hardship is not basis for a variance.
And I would also argue that my clients did not create this hardship when they bought it, that it was a one, unit one when they bought it.
They bought it? They, they, they didn't need to buy it?
They didn't, they didn't create this.
How did they not create it?
This hardship?
Yeah.
Because it was previously a unit one, so they didn't, they didn't change it at all, it was still a unit one.
But they bought it knowing it was a one unit, so the hardship was created by them, in my eyes, it was created by them. They knew when they bought it was a one unit. I don't think it should fall upon the board to help you with the hardship that was created by buying it as a one unit.
We were shown that it was previously an R3 by the realtor, and kind of assured-
Then I, my concern would be what the realtor's showing to you. I mean, if you follow through on it, like everyone should, and realize that it is a one unit, and that's what it's zoned for, at that point there, maybe we won't be here right now.
And I just think, I've referenced it, I'm more than happy to hand it up, Mark has objected for the decision of this board, January 11th of 2001, denying the obligation.
Well, you just gave us, Attorney, maybe you can clarify, but we're not seeing any, we're on that document on why it was denied.
Yeah, why.
It's not my document, it's-
No, I'm just saying, you're giving us something that says denied, and we're just looking at what reason was it denied?
That was the board's decision in 2001. They didn't-
It's the decision of this zoning board denying, and I can give you the-
I understand that, I was just asking a question.
How about I'll give you the notification that ran at that time? It was number two on the agenda, against Mark's objector, particular five.
We can mark it 4A, since it goes with four.
And again, there's no explanation for why it would turn out on the notice.
Any other comments to him, or maybe take some people from the audience?
I think before we even get the, I mean, we can take from the audience, but I mean, obviously, at this point, we don't have all the information we need. It sounds like your neighbors aren't real happy with the project. You know, maybe you should go back to square one and rethink the property, talk to your neighbors, see what they're acceptable of. As of right now, it doesn't look very, very good.
We could bring it to a vote now, if you want, just on the hardship issue, and then if it passes the hardship issue, then we can bring the neighbors in to object to the effect on the neighborhood, which is one of the-
So we can vote right now if we decide that it is a financial hardship or not?
Differently, Attorney Barrett, I think that's what you asked for originally.
Right, if the vote were, if the board were to call a vote on whether or not the applicant has successfully convinced the board that there's a hardship, I think that we've submitted evidence on that. Now, if the board thinks you need more evidence regarding single-family homes and sizes of them, I'm certainly happy to bring in realtors or any other person to testify to that.
Well, I'm willing to make that motion, that we vote on whether it's a hardship or not, before.
One second. Mr. Walsh?
Just to clarify-
Let's clarify the vote first.
We're voting on whether we think that-
Vote, you feel that it is a hardship or it is not a hardship?
Yes. Just say it is a hardship or it's not a hardship. Don't say yes or no. Be perfectly clear this time.
Mr. Walsh?
It's not a hardship.
Mr. Gattens?
Not a hardship.
Ms. Newcomb?
Not a hardship.
Chairman O'Neill?
Not a hardship.
By a vote of four to nothing, because you have not proven the hardship, the variance request would be denied.
It's a beautiful, beautiful home, guys. I really think you should-
The board's gonna take a five-minute break, if that's okay.